I'd like to, yeah, welcome you to the regular council meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. Please rise for the invocation and the, uh, I believe.
Dear Almighty Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have of serving you. We pray that you give us the wisdom and the guidance that we need to do what's best for the city and, and keep it in line with your direction and you want us to go, Lord, for we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, I'd like to add a couple of things to the agenda under committee and council member reports. Um, I'd like to add an update to the backyard park. And then I have a request for the council. And then also do a discuss an elected official visit that I had today. Do we have a motion for the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, oh, aye. All opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. Um, uh, council, do I have a, I, I, a motion for approval of the minutes for the regular scheduled meeting and executive session of Monday, January 6th, 2025?
I move that we accept the minutes of Monday, January 6th, 2025.
Second. Uh, we have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Uh, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, uh, signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Uh, do we have any nominations for recognition? No nominations for recognition, so we'll move on to certificate of recognition. Uh, what?
Never mind.
Uh, Celine, Rumor, could you come up to the front, please?
Doesn't look like we have any press in the comments, but, um, I really appreciated your presentation and I thought you did a great job. You're doing a great job for our community.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We want a picture of all the kiddos.
Could you make sure that the newsletter journal gets a picture of that?
Sure. Can we get a picture right now of all the kiddos that are here? With the mayor and the.
Wonderful idea, councilwoman. I love it.
Oh, they're so cute.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Were they all in the little program that you just?
Whatever way you guys want. Here, I'll walk around that way.
Girls, look over here, girls. This way. Now can I get you guys to look this way and then we'll be all.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot to mention that was for twirl and dance studio. Sorry. Uh, moving on to citizens business verbal, uh, item number one, Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department election. Wanna, yeah, you can come up to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, girls.
That one has grown.
Yeah.
Um, for all of you that may not know me, my name is Mary Peterson with the fire department. We held our elections and elections on January 9th. Um, James Kern will be retaining chief position. Um, myself will, uh, was elected for assistant chief. Benjamin Foote was elected for secretary and Paul Itel will be retaining treasurer.
Thank you. Do we need to entertain a motion to certify the election result?
Yes.
Do we have a, a motion to certify the election results for the Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department?
I move that we certify the elections of the fire department.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. Uh, thanks, Mary.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Have a good evening. Uh, next item is Weston County Natural Resources District Story Walk.
So just here to give you guys a little update on, um, what's going on with this story walk project. So, uh, back in September, I applied for a $10,000 grant from the, uh, Community Foundation and I heard back from them in December that I received that for the grant I requested. So we will be able to fund a minute set of displays which don't look like that front photo. Um, and I think I initially really asked you guys about being a cooperating partner. Uh, we had talked about the backyard park, but after discussing it with the bike club, we figured that might cause some collision issues, especially as it is just kind of dirt trash right now. So, um, Caleb and I have talked with Greg and Bike Club and the tree board about getting it at Centennial Park instead.
Where?
Centennial Park. Um, though one near the campus there. So it already has a paved path, so we wouldn't need to worry about people walking off the path and causing erosion and whatnot. So I submitted a new application to Greg a couple weeks ago and I guess I'm just letting you guys know that we have the money and we'll be placing orders for the materials and, uh, I guess if you guys have any questions or concerns, I don't know if I'll be able to answer them, but.
Probably start this spring or something?
Yeah, we're thinking probably later in the spring or closer to summer just to try and get volunteers and weather and whatnot.
Great idea.
Yeah, thanks a lot for all your hard work, Erin.
Oh, yeah.
Really excited to bring this to the community and hope that like local businesses and schools and clubs will participate and, you know, work with us to, you know, add on to books and whatnot. And, um, we're also hoping that the library will be able to actually let people check out like the story walk pages if they want to borrow a book to set up for an event or something. So I, yeah, I think it'll be a great program and a good way.
So I have a question. Does this change then?
Yeah, yeah, you can pull that out and put new pages in.
And who's responsible to be doing that?
Um, the district will create the pages and do the maintenance and whatnot. Um, we are gonna do fundraising for at least a couple of years to, you know, keep, you know, we're expecting some vandalism, so if stuff gets vandalized, we'll be responsible for replacing that and swapping out the books and stuff.
Okay.
Uh, are you familiar with Newcastle Recreation and, and our rec program?
Like the 21L, or whatever it is, that's called the?
Just, it's called Newcastle Recreation and it is an organization that is under the city council and they have a budget that, that they are to, uh, if you apply to them for money, you can perhaps get some.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't aware of that, so that's.
Okay, well, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, sure.
Uh, our, our city clerk has whom you might be able to talk to, but right now I don't know who's, who's running a show down there.
I'll keep that in mind.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Erin.
Yeah, thanks so much, Erin. Have a good evening.
Freckly doesn't play any of those sports, but I know that if she was, if she wanted to wrestle or play lacrosse or rugby or something, I would be very glad that she has it to where she could do it with women and not with the men.
Did you see it, Sonia? Blowing up this fast and this big? Did you, I mean, you're?
I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. Um, I know that girls have wanted to have that opportunity to do that. And so, you know, it's daunting to think about wrestling boys and it's tough when you go into a sport pretty much knowing that there's no way I'm gonna win and to keep at it and keep passionate about it. And so to have the, your own division where you're wrestling against, you know, women, because like Alexis said, it's, I mean, it's just, it's biology. The boys are gonna be stronger in high school than you are, no matter how good you are.
Item number three under citizens business verbal is Tony Shucraft about water. Mr. Shucraft?
I brought my home. Most y'all probably know me, whether you want to or not. And, uh, oh, this has been a couple of months ago. I went to a meeting here about a couple, uh, improvement projects, uh, addressing some, uh, water leaks or something. He was in a heat box in my house. I'm assuming, crazy me, that that's probably what's causing the issue with the water. I did ask them, I was sat there through the whole meeting and come to find out you guys are gonna spend a couple of million dollars to fix a couple of issues that run the water. I don't know what you're doing. Don't, I don't care. But, uh, my main question was, well, how much is my building increase? Uh, it's about twenty bucks. That's almost twice that. And, uh, I have my gas bill prorated, so it's the same every month, all year long. My water bill used to be the lowest bill in my utilities. And now it's more than my gas bill. It's almost double my electric bill. And, uh, I'm thinking, is something not right with this picture? Well, what's going on? Um, how can we fix this? Well, I'm glad you asked. Instead of reaming the good citizens, I mean, instead of getting them from behind, get them from the side. Take, put another that one cent sales tax back on. Reduce the water bill. Don't put the one cent sales back on and then not reduce the water bill. But get the bill down and, you know, if you can't get a grant writer that can do a little better job for you than that. My son, whom I invited to come tonight, and I don't know why he won't come, he was afraid I might embarrass him. Oh, figure. He's taking writing and, uh, he's getting his master's degree in writing and, uh, that falls under his purview and I'm sure he'd be more than willing to take the job. And, uh, I'd like to get him a job. Get him out of my house. So there's two solutions for you and, I don't know, I, I, every about once a week, I, I drink tap water for the day and, uh, it still tastes pretty funky. And I take this stuff called lactulose, because I'm post stage liver disease, and I take this stuff to make me void my bowels to put it mildly in the morning. Well, I don't have to take that. All I do is drink a glass of water. And, uh, it does about the same thing. But lactulose actually tastes better.
All right, Mr. Shucraft, could we stay on topic? We don't need to talk about lactulose.
The water's nasty. We're paying a lot more for it. What are we gonna do? I, I mean, I realize probably the only thing I can do is complain. Well, I enjoy doing that. Here I am complaining. So.
Well, we appreciate you coming to the meeting, Mr. Shucraft.
Do you have any answers for me?
Uh, so we adjusted the water rates because we've been charging way too low of a rate for so long that that's the reason that we have some of these issues with our distribution system. So that's why we had to raise the rates. So that's been done. So then the, uh, we're trying to address some of the issues with, um, some of our sampling that we need to take care of. And we're also developing what you were talking about with your gas bill, right? For the water, we have a pilot program so that you pay a balanced rate and we have that in the works right now. So you might come down to the city office and apply. I think the application period's still open.
Well, that's an accomplishment.
It's an agreement. So then you'll have a balanced bill like you do with your gas and you do with your other utilities so that you can have a balanced bill and you won't.
Well, I already came out of garden. My mom said put the, uh, X-ray on the garden because, well, heck, what it costs to grow a pool, it's cheaper to go buy it at the store.
Okay. Well, thank you for voicing your concerns. We appreciate it.
So in other words, that's all I have to do is complain, huh?
Well, come down to the city office and apply for the balanced billing and see how that works for you.
It's not that I can't afford it. I, I, not independently wealthy or nothing, but there are people in this town that are low income, seniors on a fixed income.
That's why we came up with the pilot program for the balanced bill.
You know, that's a crock.
Tony, Tony, I'd like to say something before you sit down. And we've heard.
Sure, Tom.
And what, what we have, and this, this council didn't do it, but we're talking about thirty some odd years of people that were here on this, these desks and didn't put the rate. We, we are, uh, actually required by law to balance the water bill and water expense, or the water usage and water expenses. Only in the water. We can't use the 1% sales tax to do anything with water. That, that, it's a wholly separate part. By law, it's a wholly separate part and we have no control over that. What we have to do is balance the books for the state within the water program. We didn't ask for this any more than you did, but we have to do it according to the law. And I'd like you to really appreciate our position here.
Well, I do. I understand. And that rings to mind now. It, am I wrong or wasn't there funds for, uh, addressing the, uh, all the water rods getting replaced years ago? Was there something going on in the?
What I can tell you is this man over here in our committee has, has developed a, a program all the way to 2035 to, to get some real problems handled in our water system. And it's taken quite a while to put it all together. And, and there's been a hell of a lot of work going on here and we're not poking anybody in the ass. We're trying to do our job.
Yeah, well, this is sad state affairs. And, uh, apparently nothing you can do about it. I appreciate that. Trust me, I, I don't. I don't, don't take it personally, none of it. It's just.
No, Mr. Shucraft, we're doing the best we can with what we got.
I'm sure you are. I just couldn't let it slide. I had to come in here and say something. I'm sure there have been other people. God, I haven't, you've heard it on already. I, I took my time and, and waited to see what happened, but.
Well, at least you came to a meeting, Mr. Shucraft, and we appreciate that.
That's one of the lot of them, too.
Well, most people just take the social media.
They just talk about us.
Complaining about stuff in the paper. I, I'm a face-to-face guy to die, kinda old school.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Ain't many of us left. Not done.
That's right. We're, we're still here.
Thank you. Thank you.
The new store. This is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to citizens business and writing, and, uh, we don't have any, uh, no old business.
Whoa, whoa, old business. Remember on the last meeting that we had, we tabled the idea of putting a mirror at Winthrop Street, uh, there by the Episcopal Church, and I was supposed to bring it up here at this meeting. And that would be old business.
Oh, isn't that on the agenda? Yeah, it's not on.
Well, old business is on the agenda. It just isn't exactly stipulated.
Okay. Well, we can talk about it, Tom. So mural by the Episcopal Church?
Yeah. Is it, is it Winthrop Street that you pull up there by my brother's house? And, and right across the street is, uh, um, anyway, I forget right now. Anyway, but when you pull up to the church, there's a, there's a pole right there. And if we put a big mirror on there, then we could see.
Mirror.
Mirror, not mural.
I thought you said mural, yes. I remember that from the last meeting.
Mirror, not mural.
Yeah, like a, a mirror.
Like the one right down the street that's there on Old Highway 85.
Yeah.
And, and, and when you pull up on my brother's side of that street, you can't see anybody coming from the east. You just, it just, you can't see around, I can't, what's that guy's name?
Is that a highway department thing or is it?
Mr. Rear Councilman, we've ordered the mirror. We haven't had, we just haven't got time to get it up yet.
Well, thank you. That's, that's, that's wonderful.
Sitting in her yard and we just haven't gotten it up yet.
Appreciate that. Will save lives.
Yep, we'll get it up soon as we can.
Perfect. Uh, well, that's great. Is there any other old business that wasn't on the agenda? No. Uh, moving on to new business, there's, uh, no new business. Um, committee and council member reports. Uh, is there any standing committee reports? No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I did make it to the rec board meeting.
Okay.
Um, and I wanted to pass along, I knew there was a question for the last meeting about their date that they had their meeting. They did change that date. Their meetings are now the second Monday of the month instead of the first Monday.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Um, anything else with the rec board, um, meeting?
No, it sounds like they're doing some restructuring, um, getting, trying to get some new members in and getting them through the, the board training. But, uh, it sounds like they've got a, a solid stance and, and doing good things.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, so I had a few things that I added to the agenda. Uh, I would like our committee and council member reports section to, uh, be more of an open forum and discussion during our council meetings. Um, so, uh, I was brought an idea for a water park. Um, and then in the spirit of economic development, which is the next item on the, uh, under, uh, council member reports, uh, I kind of believe that Newcastle, there's like a three faceted type system towards, uh, working towards economic development. So, uh, I, I believe that events and attractions would be important for our community. Um, also Main Street revitalization. So trying to engage in, in activities that promote businesses on Main Street. And then a larger view is attracting, uh, uh, you know, industry or, um, businesses on a larger scale to our community to add jobs to our community. Um, so I, I've just been talking to a lot of people. That's what I like to do as the mayor. I talk a lot. So, uh, one of the ideas that we had, and I'd like to set up a, uh, a parks committee meeting, um, because, uh, I also want this to be a team effort and I don't think that I can go with this all alone. So, uh, the water park idea has been presented by someone that used to live in our community, Bob Bonner. He, uh, he's since moved and, uh, he noticed that the community that he lives in now has a water park. Um, it's kind of an inflatable water park. There, um, oh, and just to address some of the other issues that might come up from, from this topic is, uh, there are pots of money available at the state level just designed towards parks and rec. So the money that we would spend on our infrastructure has nothing to do with what we try to go after as far as grants and funding, uh, through parks and rec. To bring attractions, bring, uh, you know, more activities for the kids, uh, things to our community that people might find desirable and might want to come engage in. So this water park idea, um, Bob said that he would be willing to zoom in to the parks committee meeting to kind of give you guys an update, tell you about the people that are involved. But it sounds like a really cool idea to me. It's, uh, they're inflatable cells. You can take them down at the end of the season and then you can reinflate them the, the next season. And then, I mean, there's lots of logistics that would need to be worked out, but, uh, that's something that we could do as we move forward if we explore this idea. So I want to put it before the, the parks, uh, committee so that you guys can decide if you even think that it's worth, uh, spending time on. So I didn't know when you guys wanted to schedule a, a parks committee meeting, but, um, I'd like to see something start happening like in the near future.
Do we want to schedule it right now? Is that what you're wanting to do?
Sure, we could, we could holler at Bob, too. I, I could email you guys and we, we could try to figure this out.
Okay.
Yeah, a little bit later to see when you would like to schedule.
Oh, okay.
So, but I'd just like to see it in the near future.
Okay.
So, uh, prior to coming to the meeting tonight, I also attended a, a meeting with the Bentz Rockets at, uh, the, the Pinnacle Bank. And, um, so there's a little bit of an update on the backyard park. Um, I, I had one of the members of the Bentz Rockets call me today and they weren't, um, a hundred percent as to where, uh, the grant funding that the Wyoming refinery, uh, had given to us for the backyard park. And that, since all of the work up to this point has been done by the city and done by volunteer work, uh, none of that money up to this point has been touched. So, uh, Clerk Haggerty told me that it's earmarked in an account that we can tap into as we move forward in trying to design or, um, implement more things for the backyard park. So, uh, anyway, uh, they met with a, uh, kind of a, what they're called the, uh, American Ramp Company. And, uh, they do park design around the country. Uh, they design parks all over. And so he was giving them a rundown on costs for the design work. And then, uh, they also work with the community. They've been in business for twenty-six years in, in moving towards grant funding and, uh, trying to get funds for. They've been in business for twenty-six years in moving towards grant funding and trying to get funds for said park. So, anyway, that was just a little bit of update. Plus, some of the folks at the refinery, they haven't heard any forward momentum on the backyard park. And then, they were just a little bit upset, so I wanted to take this moment to thank the Wyoming refinery for giving us the grant funding to use towards the park. It's much appreciated, and I think it'll make a really nice attraction for our community once it's done and completed. So, next item is, I was going to ask the council if it would be appropriate to allocate some funds to print some cards for me as the mayor.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the City Council, School Board, or County Commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Item is, I was going to ask the council if it would be appropriate to allocate some funds to print some cards for me as the mayor, so that I feel like I'm a city employee, just like all the other employees. And I was wondering if I could have some cards so that I could hand them out to the citizens so that I'm easier to get a hold of.
Greg, do you have cards?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Want to check?
Don't you?
No.
They're fairly reasonably priced through Newsletter Journal.
Why wouldn't that be an automatic? It's like these things are an automatic when you get elected, man.
It's not a problem. We can get them ordered.
Well, I would move to get the mayor some business cards.
I second that.
We have a motion, properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. I guess I get some cards now. I appreciate it.
Do you want some?
No platinum cards. I mean, just stick with the regular paper.
I don't need anything fancy, Councilman Boss. I just want to hand them out to the citizens that have concern. And then, my final item for council member reports is, I had an elected officials meeting today. I invited a couple of council members to come. I didn't want there to be a quorum. So, I invited a couple. They didn't make it. So, I met with Trinity Lewis. She's with Harriet Hagaman's office. She just stopped in the City Hall, and we talked about economic development. And she, the representative's office is more of designed towards networking. So, we just had to talk about economic development, and then she told me that they would be able to point me towards the right people at the state level to speak with as we move forward. And then, there was also some discussion about the heritage park, and it kind of got hung up, and we missed the grant opportunity for that. So, they would like to look at that completed application so they could see if there's any way that they could help.
Excuse me, may I ask, is that still in the works?
I would like it to be, Kathy.
I think you're going to have to come to the Veterans Memorial Meeting and discuss that because there's a lot of misunderstanding about that whole thing. I wasn't here when it was first brought up, so I have no knowledge. But I just know a lot of other people seem to have a different idea of what's supposed to happen there.
Myself and Councilwoman McCollough were on that, on that steering committee when we tried to move that stuff forward. So, I'd be more than happy to come to the Veterans Memorial.
It can all be worked out. I just, I don't know anything about it. I just know it. There's so many different things going around about the park and the memorial. Are they supposed to be one? Are they separate? And that's not just local people. That's statewide and different places are asking is what it's going to amount to.
But Duke should know about all that.
Yeah, Duke was on the steering committee.
He knows that, but he doesn't, he doesn't know what's planned in the future for the park.
Okay.
You know, is they going to, is the plan to build the Veterans Memorial and then add the park? They going to add all the park at one time, or the farmer's market, and then that water park they were talking about? Because the water, not the one you just talked about.
No, I know.
But a water park and a memorial that will go together real well. It doesn't seem like. Yeah, I mean, kids should play in a water park, but a memorial is a place where you kind of want to be.
More serene.
Yeah. That's all that's just a question. It's not an answer.
And that was brought up when we were.
They were trying, when they did the design work on that park, they were trying to make everyone happy.
Right. That's how Newcastle is. They try to make it. Yeah, that's true.
Well, unless we complete the projects, then we don't make anybody happy, right? So, we need to complete the projects.
Yeah, except for the memorial. Except for the memorial.
Yeah. So, I don't have anything further. Does anybody else have any council member reports?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's your promise for, you know, the meaning for the water park?
Right now, I'm going to put it before the City Water Park, or Parks Committee. But, I mean, as it moves forward, we might ask for some community and stakeholder buy-in.
I've got a little time on my hands.
Yeah. We'll remember that, and then as it moves forward, we could take that into consideration.
And I think I could be a mess. I'm not a complete jerk all the time, but I'm working on it.
Thank you. Moving on to department head reports. Police Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First calls for service since January seventh, twenty twenty-five. Newcastle Police Department, one hundred and forty-two, Weston County Sheriff's Office, ninety-one, Upton Police Department, fourteen, Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, seven, Weston County Fire Protection District, zero, Upton Volunteer Fire Department, two. And the ambulance services, I'm having an issue with our new system. For whatever reason, I can't query the system for ambulance calls, and I haven't figured out why yet. So, I don't have numbers on Newcastle ambulance, Upton is zero. I got one to pop up from Newcastle, and I know that's not right. I think they did more than that today. So, but I'll figure that out, and I'll return those numbers back next time. And the next, I guess, item I want to talk about is just, you know, update on where we're going with trying to get some people recruited and hired within the department. We did have a police committee meeting last week and just kind of discussed some general ideas for what we needed to do to draw qualified applicants to the department. One of the things we're exploring is contracting, possibly contracting with a marketing company to help kind of market the town, market the area. That seems to be the biggest struggle is people don't know what there is to do here, don't know what there is available. So, we were hoping to find a way to get our advertisement out there a little bit farther. Most of the stuff we've done to this point since I've been here is just reaching local folks. And I'm pretty sure that if somebody locally wanted to come to work for the police department, they probably already would have filled out an application. We do have a couple pending applications that we do need to go through. But we definitely need more interest, and we need to try to reach a little further. So, my plan is to get some numbers. We have a meeting with Sage Rush Marketing tomorrow and kind of get an idea of what kind of services she can offer and see if it's going to be promising or not, see what it's going to cost, and move forward from there. And once I kind of get some of those numbers put together, I plan to have another police committee meeting and start at that level if that's appropriate, to present to them what I've learned and see what they think the best approach is from there. But other than that, that's all I had to report.
Thanks, Chief. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Thompson? No? Moving on to Attorney Dublin Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Dublin. Anybody have any questions for Dublin?
Did you get a big check from that guy in Idaho or?
No, I wish. I wish. We have not heard anything.
I've actually had, just as, I guess, as an update, I've had other attorneys now. It's been, in all likelihood, I think it's probably two or three attorneys who've contacted me in regards to the pre-cast judgment that we have. The reason being that they also have judgments, and they're trying to find said individual. So, legally speaking, it's a small world for him as of right now. But as of right now, though, all of the judgments that are filed are also filed up in Idaho. And frankly, I think that whatever he does own is probably in his pockets at this point. That's all I have.
Thanks, Dublin. Moving on to Clerk Treasurer Stacy Haggerty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the budget billing pilot program, we currently have five accounts that have turned in the agreements with us. We unfortunately found out that customers that are on ACH billing will not work with the budget billing program because the way the billing is, they are actually, the bill is actually calculated on their actual usage. So, if a customer is set up on ACH payments, the computer is keeping track of that actual bill. Therefore, it will pull that actual billed amount out of their checking accounts for the ACH billing. We have had a couple customers that have elected to be taken off of ACH billing and go ahead with the budget billing program, but we do currently only have five that have signed the agreements. So, with that being said, we were hoping to implement this for January's billing. Is it the council's wish to continue to still do that for those five accounts or however many more may sign up by January, even if we don't have ten?
Sure, I think so.
What do you think?
I think we need the data.
Sure, and that's not an issue at all. My next item is that I did send out audit reports from the auditors today, just to give you guys. I emailed them some time to look at them, and then just to remind that our meeting will be at six o'clock next meeting, February third, for that audit presentation. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Haggerty. Moving on to public works. Were there questions?
I had a question.
I'm sorry.
I was looking at the revenue statement that you sent out, and on general and miscellaneous, okay? Up here, it says we expected to receive thirty thousand dollars something on item number three, five, nine, oh, okay? And then, you look at it, and we got four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in that general account. And I'm always looking for extra money, you know, to help people like Tony and others. Why do we have four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in the general, in the miscellaneous account?
And Tom, I apologize. I don't have that report with me. So, I'm going to have to look at it and get back to you.
Okay.
But I will detail it out and let you know. I apologize. I should have had it in my stack.
Anyway, I was just wondering. Thank you.
I will email you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works Supervisor Greg Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first item, we are asking for a variance for the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality. On the twenty twenty-five improvements project, we have a section of sewer line that we're going to be using high-density polyethylene pipe. We discussed this with the Water Committee last meeting. Basically, we're wanting to go to a thinner-walled pipe because we don't need the thicker-walled pipe. The thicker-walled pipe is typically used for sewage lift stations and pumps, so there's pressure against them. This pipe is actually slightly thinner in the wall, in the thickness of the wall. So, we will get more deflection, but we had lost six, about five thousand dollars. The pressure test on the sewer main after we're done is five PSI. This is rated, the pipe we want to go to is still rated at a hundred and sixty PSI. I'd like to ask that council authorize the mayor to sign the variance so we can apply for the variance for this.
Do we have a motion to apply for the variance with the Wyoming State DEQ?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we apply for a variance for DEQ to go ahead with this project with the smaller-walled piping.
We have a motion, properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. What's the cost of this?
It's going to be about five thousand dollars in savings.
Is there any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
The next item, in April, April fourteenth through the seventeenth, there's going to be a Wyoming funding summit. This is a free grant, four-day grant writing training class. I would like to attend, if that's all right, help with writing grants and hopefully use more money.
Does that require a motion?
Yeah, because he'll be required to.
Spend some money.
Purdeon and everything.
I move that we let Greg go to this great grant writing class.
Should we send him by himself?
Do we have a second?
I wanted to talk to her about a motion before we begin. Can I talk to her about a motion? We'll talk in discussion. I second a motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Okay, now, should we just send him, or should we send somebody else with him to have two people in?
I didn't realize I had to ask for permission. And I signed Carrie Peters, my administrative assistant, up for that class.
Never mind.
I guess now I'll ask for permission.
We'll have to amend the motion.
I amend my motion to read both Greg and Carrie to go to the grant writing class.
Check.
We have a motion, properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
Thank you. My next item, I'll be attending the State Lands and Best of Ford Meeting in February fourth, fifth, and sixth. I'll be in Cheyenne for the landfill one remediation project funds and the twenty twenty-five improvement project funds. Just a couple updates. We had a leak at Birch and Carter Avenue intersection. It was a failed repair plant. We did get that fixed. We currently have water showing up. I stand heat at West Main. We had some trouble getting equipment running today because of the cold weather. We're going to start on that tomorrow morning. That's all I had.
Does anybody have any questions for Greg Stolt? Go ahead, Mr. Chief.
What does it cost to go to that grant writing?
Fuel and hotel rooms and meals.
Where, where is it?
Riverton.
When?
April 14th through 17th. It's a, yeah, free grant.
Is that something that my son and I could attend?
I believe so. It's a free class.
He may have already taken this, but I'd like to share this with him in case. I'm serious about giving my kid a shot. He's smarter than me. He's saying a whole lot, but he's a pretty clever kid.
He'll be very popular. He'll be very popular if he gets into writing grants for people and is successful with it. So yeah.
He has published books. So he's an experienced writer.
Moving on to claims against the city. Do we have a motion to pay the claims against the city dated January 21st, 2025?
Your honor, I move that the city recommends its suppliers all the money and claim against the city, I move we pay our bills.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. The city's paying its bills. Do I have a motion to exit our regular session and move into executive session referencing Wyoming State Statute 16-4-405, A double I personnel?
That's a move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. We're moving into executive session at 8:50? 7:50, excuse me. Uh, folks, we're doing something different.
Freckly doesn't play any of those sports, but I know that if she was, if she wanted to wrestle or play lacrosse or rugby or something, I would be very glad that she has it to where she could do it with women and not with the men.
Did you see it, Sonia? Blown up this fast and this big. Did you, I mean, you're.
I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. I know that girls have wanted to have that opportunity to do that. And so, you know, it's daunting to think about wrestling, boys, and it's tough when you go into a sport pretty much knowing that there's no way I'm gonna win and to keep at it and keep passionate about it. And so to have your own division where you're wrestling against, you know, women, cause like Alexis said, it's, I mean, it's just, it's biology. The boys are gonna be stronger in high school than you are, no matter how good you are.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are back into regular session at 8:25 PM. And we are discussing the dismissal of Officer Moran. And the chair would entertain a motion to said dismissal at this time.
I make a motion that we dismiss her from employment of the city.
Been moved. Do we have a proper second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, did Officer Moran be dismissed from employment of the city of Newcastle? Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Well, it's been moved and seconded and properly passed that Officer Moran's employment is terminated by the city of Newcastle. Thank you. You are now the mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, meeting's adjourned at 8:25. Oh.
I second it.
Sorry. We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Meeting's adjourned at 8:25 PM.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a Bootleggers Liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.